This is subcommittee meeting of the Rules Committee to look at a couple of the rules and to reaffirm the rules that were not specifically mentioned. Clerk call a roll, please.
Chairman Kennedy?
Here.
Counselor Martin?
Here.
Counselor Madonza?
Here.
Three present.
Thank you. If I could begin, I went through the rules and made some suggestions on changes that I'd like to go through. One of the council rules is that any of the rules that we adopt or approve this evening, copies of it have to be given to all members of the city council, and they have to have a week to vote on it. So if I can, if there's no objection, my suggestion is to change Rule 1, which really just clarifies that the meeting will be on the first Monday in January, regardless of whether there's a holiday, and that the only way to change that day off of the holiday would be if one of the councillors-elect were to request that the city clerk poll the -- all the councillors-elect, and that two-thirds of the city councillors-elect would want to postpone the organizational meeting until the next day.
I just have a question.
Mr. Chairman, if I could? Yes.
On these, have solicitor been consulted about drafting the new language, or how did we come up with the new language?
No, but I think if -- I guess I did not go through -- the language is mine.
Okay.
So I guess if the -- if we approve any or all of these, the thing to do would be to send it to the solicitor, and as I mentioned, one of the rules says that it can't come before the city council for at least a week, so it should be time for everybody to have a good look at it and make sure that everything's in order.
Okay. Well, I have no comment on the first one. I mean, I have no objection to the first one. So that's -- how do we want to proceed with this? You want to discuss them all first and then vote them one at a time?
Okay.
I have no objection to the first, so if we could just accept that one as a recommendation.
Okay.
I have a question on the first.
Counselor Mercy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question on the first.
Yes.
And I can understand where you're coming from, because like you, I believed we should have been sworn in on that Monday. The only time that I can remember is if that Monday fell on a holiday, which would have been New Year's Day, which it did, then I would have wanted to come the next day. But where New Year's Day was on a Sunday, and Monday was Monday, which had no meaning to accept that we could have been sworn in, and it was postponed to Tuesday, but -- so I'm asking you, how far in advance do we need to do this, like the very last meeting of that year in December?
This indicates that it would be the up to -- it would be the councillors-elect, not the sitting city council that would decide.
Right.
So they could decide right after, you know, right after November, or up until just before, or up until notice goes out.
And let's take a hypothetical case that five city councillors are not here and get re-elected, and you've got six city councillor-elect, and our very last meeting, let's say, is like the Tuesday before Christmas, and it's a swearing-in for that first Monday in January. How do you get the councillors-elect here to do that? That's a little...
The city clerk would poll by telephone.
Poll by telephone?
The councillors-elect.
All right.
So whatever incumbents are going to be on the new city council, they would be polled, and the councillors-elect would be polled. And so it would be done that way, or by email or whatever, but that's who would make the decision.
Oh, I see. Okay. That clears that up. Thank you.
Rule 5A?
So then why don't we have a motion to recommend this change?
Okay.
Counselor Madonza made that motion. I'll second.
Okay. All in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
So voted. Rule 5A, I'm recommending that we delete the rule as it is, and then it's really just a language change of the same rule. The present rule indicates that the city council subcommittees will be held on a Thursday at 6:30, and this would allow the city council subcommittees to be held on any day after 4:00 p.m.
Yeah, I -- Mr. Chairman?
Counselor Martin.
I think this, as I understand it, this rule came into being when the chamber was first set up with cameras, and so it was a way to get, you know, a specific designated time where the chamber would be available and somebody made available to cover with meetings. But as it's evolved, it really hasn't been necessary to just have a single day for these meetings, and in fact, you know, many of them are on Tuesdays, some are on Wednesday. I think it's actually more likely that they're Monday or a Wednesday than a Thursday, but that's just my memory of different times I've met in subcommittees. So, you know, I think the historical reason for this rule is no longer necessary, and so my question, I guess the summer months portion of this doesn't change, right?
Well, that's only because I overlooked that.
Okay.
All right, so it's...
Yeah, okay. You were doing pretty good, too.
Yeah.
So that, maybe we can just take that out, right?
Yeah, we should be able to take that out.
Well, we'd have to have something about subcommittees.
No, no, I meant the except, except when the meeting falls.
When meetings would be held on the second and fourth Thursday.
Yeah, I think, well, it's already covered pretty much by the "as otherwise designated."
Right.
So there's really no reason to have the last sentence, I believe.
So we do...
You wish to delete that.
Okay. So do you want to make a motion?
I'd make a motion that we delete everything in the first sentence after the word "except", just the first sentence, and then pick up with the second sentence that says, "Said meetings shall be held on an as-needed basis, may be televised." Leave that.
Okay.
So take out the word "except" through the end of the rest of that sentence, and so I'd make a motion to approve it as amended.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve as amended?
I'll second the change.
Second the motion.
Does the clerk have the change?
One second.
Sure.
All in favor, all opposed? So voted. Rule 10 is the manner of voting, and I put this one in blue because I think we -- I'm not exactly sure what to do about this rule, other than what I'd like, the way I'd like the rule to be is that all votes would be, could be by a voice vote of yays and nays, unless a city council requested a roll call. But there are certain matters that require a two-thirds majority, or -- and so they would require a roll call. So I'd like for the rule to reflect that, and I kind of, it's in blue because I kind of left that up to the clerk. Is any discussion on that, or?
We, I mean, maybe, I would -- my view would be, you say, you know, $50 or more, or a request of any member, or as otherwise required by law, or something like that.
Okay. Counselor Madonza?
I have no problem with the change as suggested.
Okay.
It essentially stays the same. If we have something that's going to be over $50, we're going to have a voice vote, or as if anyone calls for a roll call vote, as usual.
Right. I interpret a voice vote as just a yays and all in favor, all opposed, and a roll call vote is by, yeah.
This is essentially require a roll call vote for $50 or more.
Right. But I guess what I'm saying is, is I think there's a lot of roll call votes that really don't need to be roll call votes. So what I'm -- the reason I even looked at this one was to try to cut down on the number of roll call votes. That's kind of my aim.
My suspicion is that a lot of them are required by law, but we could be wrong. I could be wrong about that, so. But as modified, I have, I think that if anything gives us enough protection, right?
Yeah.
Does the clerk want to give us what he thinks we're changing, just to make sure there's an understanding of what it is we're changing in Rule 10?
Rule 10 is, my understanding is that it's going to be yea-nay votes for anything over $50 or more, with the exception if a member wants a roll call vote, he should be entitled to a roll call vote, and secondly, the roll call that are prescribed by law should be done by a roll call vote.
Okay. Counselor Mercy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I thought that any vote involving any amount of money would be a roll call vote. Having said that, I don't ever recall any vote being under $50.
I think that there are certain transfers that don't require a roll call vote, and other transfers that do. I think, and I could be, I may not be perfectly correct on this, but I think a transfer within a department does not require a roll call vote, but a transfer of money from one department to another would require a roll call vote. That's my understanding.
And my understanding was different. I understood that anything coming before us that had a monetary value of money on it, we had to automatically have a roll call vote. I actually thought that was the law.
Well, that's why I put this one in blue, because I thought it best to leave it up to the clerk, and for him to sort it out, with the idea that we would try to cut down on roll call votes. That's really my only aim here.
But when it comes to money, I don't fool around with that. I do what the law says, but I don't recall anything under $50 coming our way in quite a, no, I don't even remember it. But anyway.
I guess what I'm expecting is that the city clerk is not going to write anything up that will make us contrary to the law, so.
So this will also go to the solicitor's office as well, right?
Yes, it will. Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
If I could just point out, so the requirement that votes of more than $50 be by roll call, that requirement remains. We're not changing that.
If that's required by law.
Right. And, okay, and, but is, when you mention the transfers, I don't think inter-depart line items in the same department come to us.
Unless they're between supplies and personnel. Salary line items, and so if they're within salary or within supplies, they don't need our vote. If they're between those two, then they would need our vote. Otherwise, the manager just wouldn't even bring it before us.
Okay.
All right. Well, I don't object to the motivation here, so as long as, you know, the clerk comes up with suitable language, that's acceptable to me.
So the chair will entertain a motion to refer this Rule 10 to the city clerk for proper verbiage?
Okay.
Sure.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, all opposed? So voted. Rule number 11 is really just a change in the language that just gives individual members of the city council a longer time to move reconsideration. It would give them until Friday, when the agenda is due. So in other words, if you were on the prevailing side on a motion on Tuesday that passed, and you wanted to move reconsideration, you would have until the agenda was set on Friday at 2:00 to do that.
Okay.
Rather than just, rather than 24 hours.
Yeah, I think, didn't we change the close time to noon, though?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, well, noon time's fine. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so by 2:00, by noon on Friday.
Okay. So we have a motion to recommend that rule?
I have no objection.
Okay.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, all opposed? So voted. Rule 17, I just added a sentence which would allow the maker of the original motion to have the prerogative of speaking last, even if the council has already spoken twice. It's just, it just gives a little latitude to the maker of the motion over Rule 17. And the reason that I thought this was important is that if someone brings a motion in after all the debate is finished, if the person has already spoken twice without suspension of the rules, they're not able to speak again, and there may be matters that have come up during the debate that require clarification by the maker. And so I just wanted to give the maker the prerogative of speaking last. Doesn't mean he has to, but he would have that prerogative if he wanted to invoke it. Any discussion?
I'm just wondering about the mechanics of it. So, I mean, how would you know that they're last? I mean...
Yeah, I guess, yeah, so.
You would know that they were last because everybody else would have spoken twice, or before the vote, if the maker of the motion would have something to say.
What happens if the speaker or the maker of the motion raised their hand for a third time, and then after that, others who haven't spoken twice raise their hand?
I guess I think what would happen is that the chair would ask if there was any more discussion, and if there was no more discussion, then at that point, the maker of the -- we wouldn't even have to call on him. At that point, the maker of the motion would be able to take the prerogative of speaking last, but I would think in most cases, the maker of the motion wouldn't end up doing that.
Well, I don't disagree with that.
It's just going to have to be enforced by the chair.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Right. All right. Anyone else before we go to the last word?
Okay. Motion on the recommendation?
I like that, because I like to always get the last word. It's my motion.
So move to approve this one.
Motion to approve?
No objection. I'll second.
Second. All in favor, all opposed? So voted. Rule 20, I think, just is, ties in with Roberts' rules, and all it does is if you make a motion and the motion is then seconded, then you can't withdraw the motion unless the person who seconds a motion, if the person who seconds a motion objects.
Okay. So the notion is if it's, it would still need, if it have to be withdrawn by the original maker and the person who seconded it?
Well, the maker can withdraw the motion. As the rule reads now, the maker's allowed to withdraw the motion beforehand, but once it's seconded, you know, once the motion's made and it's seconded and is on the flow-up, then if the maker of the motion wanted to withdraw the motion, the person who seconded the motion would have to be in agreement. Discussion? Go ahead.
The first change before it is seconded, is that existing language, or did you add before it is seconded?
I added, wherever it's yellow is something that I added.
Okay. Because that was true. I mean, under Roberts' rules, you can withdraw a motion before it is seconded.
Right.
And you just want to, I mean, this could be done now, though. I mean...
Well, some of it's just to clarify certain things, and I, you know, there's, as we move on, and we're like halfway through now, there's a couple of things that are just for classification purposes.
Okay. I mean, because under Roberts' rule, this could occur now. It wouldn't have to be a rule, but, so I have no objection.
Okay. Do we have a motion to recommend?
Sure.
Motion to recommend?
I'll second.
Seconded. All in favor, all opposed? So voted. Okay, and under Rule 26, I think it was just a typo. I think it should read pro or con, but it didn't, it read pro or we. So I think that was just a typo. That's why that's in blue. However, I did add this paragraph to that rule, which what I'm proposing is that we add a paragraph that says, "Persons who do not reside within the city or who were not employees of the city will not be permitted to speak unless they are endorsed by a member of the city council, and providing that a majority of the city council does not object."
I have a few thoughts on this one. I thought, well, I think one of these came from the mayor, right? The whole pro or con notion, and maybe...
Counselor Laurie.
Oh, Counselor, that you may want to be heard, but you wouldn't want to necessarily be recorded as in favor or opposed. You just had some perspective to add, for example.
So do you think we should delete pro or con?
That was the motion that came, that was referred to us.
Okay.
And then, as to the non-residents, I wonder how we, you know, for example, treat somebody who's represented by council, who may not be a resident. Do they need to get approval from the council? Are they allowed to speak?
Well, I guess I, this was Counselor Mercy's suggestion, so probably I'll let her speak on it.
Well, the way that I understand it, and it was never enforced, but since we're looking at the rules, I know that Counselor Laurie and the mayor wanted a category, when there's a public hearing, for those wishing to speak in favor, those wishing to speak in opposition, and then someone, and over our years, we've had people come to the podium at a public hearing and say, "I don't really know, I'm not for it or against it," so there's a category in the books that says that they could. Having said that, there are times when people come and speak before the council, and they speak about whatever their problem is, or concern is, and yet, technically by the rules, they don't have any right to be up there, and I hate to say that, but number one, it states, "You should be a resident of the city, and if you're not, you work in the city." So if you don't work in the city and you live in Chemsford, then you really don't have a right here, but, I mean, I'm not going to tell them they can't speak. But having said that, I don't know, I don't know, that's...
Counselor Laurie?
The motion itself was pro or con, or just to be heard, and I don't know if that's how you would want to write it, someone who wants to come forward just to be heard. As far as the out-of-town, we have a lot of business, members of the business community who don't live in the city, and they may want to come to City Hall and speak. Would they be exempt where they have a business in the city?
I think that if you have a business, according to this rule, if you had a business in the city, then you would be able to speak, but you would need for one city council to say, you know, "It's okay for you to speak." You know, this, I can think of two different instances when the public speaks. One is at public hearings, and that's, I mean, those are organized so that everybody in favor will speak, and everybody opposed speaks afterwards. That's the way it's organized. But there are other matters that come up before the city council where people just register to speak on that, and those people do not have to indicate whether they are in favor or opposed. They can just speak on that issue.
That was the idea of the motion. The way it's written, it says pro or con, and it was just to change it if people just want to come to be heard and ask questions.
Okay.
And that, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
But I do have great objection to someone from out of the city that doesn't have a business here, that wants to speak at the podium and discuss finances, when they have no right to be doing that. They don't live here, they don't pay taxes, they don't own a business here. They should not be speaking on that. I don't know if it has, but if we have verbiage, then I want that particular instance put in there, except when relating to city finances. That isn't anybody else's business, except those that live here and have businesses here, with the exception of finances, or something to that effect.
I agree with you. I mean, if I went out, if you and I went out to Littleton to speak on a new school project or something, I don't think we'd have any standing, and I don't think we'd be allowed to speak.
Right.
So I don't know why we should allow people to come in and speak on those matters here. If you have a business in the city and it's an issue that's affecting your business, that's sort of a different thing.
Yes, that's true.
Counselor Laurie?
No, I concur with Counselor Mercy and yourself. If someone doesn't have a business, they don't have a reason really to be here speaking, especially on finances, then I would concur with Counselor Mercy. I agree with her 100 percent.
Okay. Counselor Madonza?
To that point, if I could just change, a quick change, the very first line says, "At any open, any meeting open to the public, citizens and employees of the city have, shall have a reasonable opportunity to be heard." Could we just add business owners to citizens and employees?
That would be okay with me.
And then we wouldn't need the extra paragraph at the bottom that you were suggesting. We could always suspend the rules, as we have on occasion, if we needed to allow someone other than that category to speak on something.
Okay. And then we, so on certain matters, you wouldn't have to, you wouldn't have to register as pro or con either, just for public hearings. On other matters, you don't have to register whether you're in favor or opposed.
I generally believe that most people come to speak are either in favor or opposed, but I really don't care if they stipulate upfront whether they're pro or con. So deleting the pro or con phrase is fine with me.
Okay.
So there'll be, that change would be fine, and then adding business owners to, so it would be citizens, business owners, and employees of the city.
Okay. And then deleting the yellow paragraph, right?
That was new anyway, right?
Yeah, that's new.
So I mean, just not adding it.
Right.
We won't be adding it.
Okay. And then at the bottom of that rule, there's also a part in blue that says that public hearings are held on the fourth Tuesday of the month at 7:00 p.m. That isn't the case, and probably would, I would, I'd like to delete that altogether. The public hearings can be at 7:00, but I don't think that they need to be on the fourth Tuesday. For instance, if you came in on the third Tuesday, or if a matter comes up on the third Tuesday, then maybe isn't time for the public hearing, and so you're pushing it off, then it's like six, you know, six weeks. It doesn't always work that, for the public hearings, or it's not always the most efficient way to have the public hearings on the final, the fourth Tuesday of the month.
Yeah, I agree. We're not following that anyway, so we should probably, should strike the, we'll leave "shall be held" at 7:00 p.m. and strike the rest. So we'll strike the fourth Tuesday of the month.
Okay.
Just leave "shall be held" at 7:00 p.m.
Okay. So you want to make a motion to recommend everything that you have just said in the past two minutes?
If the clerk has been keeping... I want to add.
Counselor Martin?
I would also want to add, in the first line after "employees of the city," I would like to add "in their council."
Okay. No objection?
No objection.
Okay, that's fine. Any more discussion? Is that okay with you, Counselor Mercy? Okay. All in favor, all opposed? So voted. Rule 27, the stages of legislation, I just add, added, "And if no member rejects for matters that require a public hearing, the second reading will not take place until after the public hearing has been held." That's already kind of in the rule. It's in one of the other rules a little bit later on, but just to clarify that, I would suggest that we add that, those lines to Rule 27.
Well, usually the second reading occurs just prior to the public hearing, but that's the opening of the public hearing is a second reading.
The second reading should occur after the public hearing, and I think there's another, and see, what it's going to allow us to do is delete the part about all general and special laws enacted by the House of Representatives in the Senate that makes the council wait a week before they accept or reject such legislation. If you look at the last sentence of Rule 29, under ordinances, it says, "Upon introduction, every ordinance may receive its first reading, and shall then be referred to public hearing if so voted by the council."
So you have a public hearing, if I may, and it's... So you have a public hearing, if I, if I may, and it's, uh, you know, about, so you say this is the public hearing that was referred at the, you know, March 30th meeting?
Right.
And you don't really read...
Well, you would have the...
You have the title, but you don't really read the proposal.
You would have the first reading, then, and then the matter would be referred to public hearing. Then you would open up the public hearing at 7:00, conclude the public hearing, then have the second reading by title only if there's no objection, and then have the vote. That would allow, the second reading would allow any member to object to the second reading if they wanted to, including, um, special legislation that, that we would, where beforehand we would, we would have to wait a week. You wouldn't have to wait that week, because if there was no objection from any member, there's no point to waiting.
Right. Okay.
Can we have a, a recommendation? Is there any other discussion on that? Okay. A motion to recommend?
To, uh, for Rule 27?
Yeah.
So, uh, I, I move to adopt the suggested language.
Okay. Second?
I'll second.
Counselor Madonson? All in favor, all opposed, so voted. And that, that allows for, that last sentence to be deleted, the last paragraph to be deleted. Suspension of the rules, um, 32 is by vote, voice vote of yeas and nays unless objected to by two city councils. This was just for suspension of the rules, so a, a motion to suspend the rules can just be a yea and aye vote unless two councils object?
That, but that, that actually gets to a change in practice, because, because now it's, uh, it, the yea, the, two councils object, the rule can't be suspended.
Right.
But now it could be. The only thing you're objecting to is whether it's a voice vote or a roll call vote.
Well, no. It's a voice vote of yeas and nays unless objected by two councils. So it's, there's no need for a roll call vote, because two, two, um, two negative votes would be enough to, uh, to stop the suspension of the rules.
Well, uh, that is current practice, though. We don't, two roll calls unless there's an objection.
Well, if there are two objections. There's a request for one.
Yeah, if there's a request for one.
I usually make that request around 10:00.
Okay, well, do you think this one's fine the way it is?
If it's not intent, if it's not intended to change that, that practice, uh, I, I just, you know, I defer that we're going to have time to dwell on this, so I, I don't object to the, the concept here. Just want to make sure that we're not changing the meaning by inserting that.
Okay.
So we'll take the clerk's guidance on that.
Yeah, I don't think there's any need to change the language since it's existing practice. It still continues to be.
Okay. So do you want to refer to the clerk, or do you just want to not do anything with this? Or, um...
At the moment, I just prefer to leave it as is, existing language. Unless somebody else...
That's okay.
All right. So I move to that we re, we reject this proposed change, or we have to, we just let that one go? We don't have to do anything?
Right. Okay. Okay. Rule 36, um, is an amendment which basically, um, there are two, two rules, for some reason, that are called Committee of the Whole. Um, so what I did was to, uh, what I'm suggesting is that Rule 36 and Rule 37 be amended, um, to include the language for Rule 38 and 39, and that Rule 38 and 39 be deleted. And that's, it's kind of like, that, that's really all it does. It's, it doesn't change anything. It just, um, compacts them into, into, uh, two rules instead of four.
Rule 38 is almost, it's more of subcommittees, or the establishment there are. So it states that the city council shall have such committees as may be established from time to time by the mayor. Oftentimes, we call those ad hoc. That would be how it is done. If we delete that, I don't see where it comes in somewhere else.
Well, Rule 37, it changes the name of the committee, uh, because that was called Committee of the Whole as well. So I changed that to Committees and Meetings Notification. And it allows for the mayor to...
Okay, I see. You can continue. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
So, so that's all that it does, is, is I just took the, these two little rules, 38 and 39, and put them into 36 and 37. And then changed the name of Rule 37, uh, just because there were, I think there were three rules called Committee of the Whole.
Okay. I have no objection to those changes, Rules 36 through 39.
Okay. Give a motion to recommend?
I'll, I'll move to recommend.
Motion to recommend, seconded. Discussion?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On Rule 38 that you'd like deleted that says, the city council shall have such committees as may be established from time to time by the mayor, which no doubt are ad hoc subcommittees, where is that in Rule number 36?
It's 37, just above that in yellow. I missed it myself at first.
Where is it?
Yeah, on that page that says delete Rule 38, right above in yellow. It's part of 37.
All right, I see it. I see it. I can agree with that. That's fine.
Any other discussion?
I would, uh, I'd just make a motion that these changes, uh, be referred to the clerk to, uh, put in final form, also to get the guidance from the solicitor on that final form, and, and when they're ready, that they'd be, uh, then presented to the full council for, uh, consideration.
I'll second that.
You'll second that? Okay. And so, um, after that's done, if there's no objection from the committee, what I will, what I would do is, um, ask the clerk, have the clerk, or maybe want to incorporate it into the motion, have the clerk distribute it to all members of the council, so that they all have a week to, um, okay. Okay, if there's, is there any other business? Has anybody else have?
Nope.
Chair will entertain a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Motion to adjourn, seconded. All in favor, all opposed?
Aye.
Means adjourned.